Good evening, and the City of North Plains City Council Regular Session Meeting for Monday, November 6, 2023 at 7:03. Please stand for the flag.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the required, which stands one nation under God. Invisible liberty and justice.
Laurie Roboff. Thank you. Mayor Linnahan, here. Counselor Page.
Here.
Counselor Kendall.
Here.
Counselor Payton.
Here.
Counselor Sheldon.
Present.
And Counselor Smith.
Here.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Laurie. Item number six on our agenda is the consent agenda. We have three items. We have the approval of the November 6 City Council Regular Session Agenda. We have the approval of October 16, 2023, City Council Minutes. And we have Resolution 2249 Petition NP-23-02 on May 2024 ballot. Are there any corrections or additions to the menus that we need to be aware of?
I have a question, and I am asking about statutory requirement of item 6C. Can you speak to that? Or 6C is Resolution Number 2249?
Yeah, that that is in regards to the May 2024 ballot referendum. That can be done by consent agenda. If you'd like to pull it off. This is something the city attorney said. If you'd like to pull it off and discuss, we can do so. Otherwise, since it's not a financial matter, or it's not a policy matter, it can be done under consent. It's consent agenda. It's up to the council.
Not necessarily, but I'm just, the question I would have is, what is our statutory requirement in regards to passing this or not passing this, whether it's separate from the consent consent agenda or not? I want to know what the consequence consequence is if we do not.
It's simply in our code. Once, once the city recorder and the county elections office has certified that there are enough voter, North Plains voter signatures for a ballot referendum, then the council just has to take a simple action. It's, it's basically two words in the code that say certify election.
If you're online, would you mind muting yourself, please?
Thank you. So Counselor Sheldon, there's just something as simple as that, a code requirement.
All right. Then I have no further questions.
Counselor Smith?
Yes, I would like to vote.
You would like to vote on it?
Yes, yes or no? I would go.
Well, the question is, there's no question.
It's an automatic, right? I mean, it's kind of.
No, it has to have a motion to approve the consent agenda and all items within it. Doesn't become a question until the first motion is made.
Okay.
So there's. Well, we have a consent agenda. We have three items under the consent agenda. And so I entertain a motion for the consent agenda. As written.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Counselor Smith?
I would like to vote. I don't think you know. On YouTube or not. I know it's it's a we're following the law by doing that. And I'm going to vote by what they are saying. And we were going through this process. They told us, we don't need to follow the law. So I'm going to take their cue on this one. And not follow the law. It's my
So mayor, perhaps what we could do here is Lori could just do a roll call on the consent agenda.
Okay.
And then you can get a voice vote.
Okay.
Member said that's the.
Okay. Um, so we have a first on the table to approve the motion that consent agenda is written second, first by Counselor Sheldon, second by Counselor Kendall. On discussion, and I'm going to do a roll call vote. And I will start with Counselor Sheldon.
Yay.
Counselor Kendall.
Yay.
Counselor Page.
May, I believe that's when we was discussing agenda, we should.
Counselor Smith.
May.
Counselor Payton.
Yay.
And Mayor Linnahan is a I'm going to go with yay. I'm sorry. I think that was four to two. All right. So the motion carries. Item number seven is our public comment. We have one person here in the room that was just to speak on that. Lori, was there anything submitted in writing for public comment?
Nothing prior to the meeting.
And are there any notation, anyone that we should be aware of online for public comment? And we anyone raising their hand or what?
Someone in your chat. We have to see.
Um, all right. So we have one person that was just to speak on items not on the agenda. Corey, please come up and state your address for the record. That view?
Yeah.
So I need you to come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes to speak on something not on the agenda.
Oh. Never mind.
Change your mind?
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Hearing that, we'll go on to item number eight A, which is our new business. Tonight, we have a presentation. Andy, I know you did email this out to us earlier today. It's on the broadband feasibility study phase two results. I'll go ahead and turn this over to you.
Okay, thanks, Madam Mayor. Tonight, we have a couple of our broadband consultants that we are working on, working with Dave Stockton and Neil Shaw. They've done a lot of broadband work in Oregon throughout the years. And just a little recap. The city allocated, the city council allocated some of the American Rescue Plan dollars to look at broadband feasibility in the, for the community, for either fiber to the premises project or some other project possibilities for bringing just more more competitive broadband or improved broadband and telecommunications services to the city. And the staff in RFP and Uptown Consultants was the the winning project consultant. They started their work about a year ago, and Dave will kind of go over some of the results of and the recap of, of what phases one and two of this work have looked like. We got an update on phase one earlier this year. And council gave him the go ahead to go with phase two. And so Dave will spend more, Dave and Neil will spend more time talking about phase two, but I think he'll begin with a little bit of a recap of what we had discussed earlier this year, that the phase one results. So Dave, give me one second. I'm going to share your slides here, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay.
Okay. So whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you, Andy. So if you guys recall, and good evening, everyone. So Neil and I were with you a few months ago to talk about phase one. So if we advance to one slide, let's talk about the two phases of the project. So phase one, when we met earlier, we talked about basically what the broadband environment today was within North Plains, both from an infrastructure standpoint, as well as what the incumbent offerings are. And so what's being made available currently regarding broadband within the city. And then, very importantly, we reviewed market research results. So we conducted a pretty large survey. And really, the purpose of phase one was to understand the environment that we're within. When we talk about phase two, we're really going to be looking at the financials and understanding the financial analysis around this opportunity. So as we talked about phase one earlier, really, the highlights there were there was moderate market demand. We, we saw a market demand and take rate at the tested price points of about a 25% take rate for broadband service. And then we saw basically average levels of satisfaction currently in the market. We did see typically higher than normal brand preference for Comcast. And then we also talked a little bit, because it was so topical at that point in time, about federal grant programs and grant dollars that are available, actually both at the federal and state level. And basically there, we saw as a lack of eligibility. I'll talk about that a little bit more in a second, but based on the services that are available in the market today, there are restrictions on what kinds of markets and geographic areas can get access to those grant dollars. And that does not appear to be a likely case for you all, but we'll talk about that more. So, so that's kind of like the summary of what we saw in phase one. And what we want to talk about tonight and recap, and we're just going through a part of the report. This is not the full report. You know, for the sake of respecting your time, we're going to kind of go through an executive summary here and just hit the highlights and obviously leave time for discussion and answer your questions. But we're going to talk about three things. One would be the business models that we looked at. There are different ways that you as a municipal can approach encouraging better broadband in your community, and, and we'll talk about what those options look like. And then Neil's going to go through looking at a very important piece, which is understanding the capital budget that would be required to make this kind of investment. As you would expect, it's substantial construction cost to build a network like this, and he'll talk about those details. And then I'll wrap it up again by looking at the financial analysis and what the outcomes are from what the various business models are. Okay? So if we start with the business models, there we go. To oversimplify this a little bit, there are really three main models that we're looking at here. And all of these can be very customized, but if we look at just structurally, what are your model options when it comes to broadband? These three are definitely the most popular and the most common. The first would be wholesale. And that's really where you have another entity, typically private sector. It could be public sector, but it's typically private that you partner with, and they operate the network. So they are the service provider. You are not a service provider. You would have some role in investment, and you possibly would own some of the infrastructure, but you would not have an operating role. Okay, and we'll talk about the differences and what that means in a minute. The second model, which is a little more involved for the city, is where you would have an operating partnership. So you would own the network, you would have some operating roles in the day to day running of a broadband business, but you would outsource some of the functions to a partner. That could be Hillsborough, it could be a public entity like them, or again, it could be a private sector partner as well. And then the final model, which would be a, a public ownership model where you both own it and you operate it, you do everything. So, so those are the models that we're going to look at here. And let's talk a little bit about financial terms and the structure that we typically see. We're going to talk about this in a minute. We get to the last part, which is the financial analysis. So this will just kind of give you an overview of how these different arrangements are typically structured financially. So if we talk about a public-private partnership, which can also be open access, typically, the, the way that the compensation flows is that that service provider will build the end user customer, keep those revenues, and then pay you for accessing and using your infrastructure. And the common model for that is that there's a fee paid per month for each premise passed. So, and that's reflecting the investment that you've typically made to put the network into pass each premise and have service available. And on top of that, there would be an additional fee for each premises or entity that is connected to that network and is an end user. And so we've got some example dollar amounts here of $6 a month for that passing fee and $17 a month for that connection fee. And there can be other variations on this, of course. And obviously, there can be different price levels negotiated, but this is a pretty common structure. And then if we move over to the right of this slide into the models where you are more involved, under the partnership model, typically what happens there is you're going to bill and keep all the money, and you're going to pay that operating partner that's helping you out. And that fee is going to vary. Typically, we've seen $10 to $25 per subscriber per month. And that's just going to be really dependent on the exact rules that your partner is taking, and that can vary somewhat, but that's a pretty common range of pricing. And then if you do everything, it's bill and keep, so to speak. So there's no other fee involved. So that's kind of just a simplified view of how this compensation will typically flow. So next slide, if we look at the kind of trade offs here, and again, we're going to oversimplify it, but if we look at the wholesale model advantages, really, they center on a reduction in the financial investment that you need to make. So you're going to offload some of that to that service provider partner. And in some cases, they'll take essentially all of the investment. Not always the case for sure, but they can take a pretty substantial role in terms of the investment. It just depends on the deal that struck. The other advantage with wholesale is there's just significantly less organizational demand in terms of running a business like this. So those are the two primary advantages. If we look at the, the retail model where you're doing more, the advantage there is that you really have more control over what's offered to the market. So you set the price point, for example, that a customer is going to pay for broadband. You have full control over that. In a wholesale model, you do not. And then secondly, and kind of along with that is you have more control over the customer experience. So level of customer service, et cetera, et cetera, versus leaving that to the private sector. So there's just inherent trade offs. And it just depends on what's negotiated, of course, but there are certain inherent trade offs to each of these, and depending on what you're looking to accomplish, you know, one could be a better fit for a city like yourself versus another. Okay? So if we look at some examples here, and I'll just give you a couple, just to give you some flavor around what this can look like. Let's start with Ammon, Idaho, which is the next slide. And this is an interesting example here. It happens to be open access, so it's wholesale. So Ammon is a city is not operating this network. But their story is pretty interesting. They did a couple of things that are unique. And what happened is in the last round of federal grant dollars, which goes back to about 2010, under the Obama administration, there was a great deal of federal grant dollars available, and Ammon Idaho applied for a grant. They did not get that grant. They had set aside a million dollars to match that grant. And when they didn't get it, they didn't stop. So they proceeded and started building what's called a middle mile network, which is essentially a fiber backbone connecting some major city facilities and infrastructure in, within the community, and they turned that on and, and started operating. And then eventually, a few years later in 2017, they expanded their role and investment to offer services to households. And the way they did that was through a local improvement district funding structure. And they would build out, they would fund themselves to build out and pass premises, and then the resident would pay for the connection to the network. And I'll talk about that, that structure in a minute. And so they ended up having five internet service providers. Again, it's open access. You can see the list there. So they generated this competition in the market, and it worked out very well. And they're really favorable terms in terms of the value that these internet providers are bringing, probably because there's so much competition between them. But not only in terms of really, you know, valuable pricing, but also no data caps, they're not using contracts, not using short term promotional pricing. So in terms of the value that the community is getting, it's really strong compared to what's typically out there. So if we go to the next slide, we'll talk about how they're funding this. So what they do is they will identify a neighborhood. And they will inquire about and open up for registration. They'll allow the residents to register in and basically opt into a local improvement district. And what they'll do is they'll track that registration level, and if it hits a certain threshold, you know, a percentage of homes in that neighborhood, if it hits that level, they will open up the lid and fund it and proceed. And so that's up to the residents. They don't have to register in. And even if they build, they do not have to sign up and participate and switch their service onto this new network. It's up to them. But if they do sign up in time, they get to participate in the lid, which means they get to amortize over a 20-year period, the cost to make that connection to the network. And it's not trivial, because that connection cost in their case is about $3,000. So what this all means at the bottom of the slide in terms of the value to the community is that there is the fee that the customer household pays to get the connection. That's amortized. Typically, that's averaging about $23 a month. And then the city on top of that charges a maintenance fee of $16.50. And then each, depending on which service provider they pick, and they have five to pick from, they pay their fee for whatever level of service. But typically, they're offering really good pricing for gig level service. So the average range for a customer, given all these components of, of pricing, is paying $50 to $65 a month for gig service. So again, it's just a really interesting example of a way to do this. And they have done this without debt. So they invested the initial million, and then from there, they're using the cash flow from the network over time to gradually finance these build outs and open up new neighborhoods. The downside with this approach is it's very patient and slow. So they're still on lit number five and number six. And they've been doing this for a while now. So this is not a fast path to introducing broadband in the community, but it's very cost effective and providing good value in their case. Another example would be Ting. And they're out there, they're a national player. They come from the wireless industry, and a number of years ago, they got involved with fiber. And they're just an entity, private sector, that's very willing to partner with municipals. Their pricing structures, they'll offer gig service symmetrical for about $90 a month. And you can see they're, they're involved with a number of markets, and this list continues to grow. And they're involved with markets that are not necessarily really large. So they're, they're unlike Google Fiber. And that's why I'm not talking about Google Fiber tonight. In your case, smaller market. These guys will look at smaller markets. So a different model than what Ammon did, but an interesting opportunity in terms of potential partnership. Okay? And now I'm going to kick it over to Neil to talk about the network components.
Okay, thanks, Dave. So what are the main things about a feasibility study is to understand the capital budget? Because when you get into something like this that involves a lot of outside plant construction, both aerial and underground, it becomes a, a driving force of the financial performance of this type of enterprise in a fiber to the premise system. And so the way we do that, the way we go about defining and quantifying what it's going to cost to build out your system is to look at representative neighborhoods within the system and design them, and then cost them out based on the, the prevailing current cost of materials and labor. Now, as it, as it turns out, what we would normally do for a city like Hillsborough or a larger city is we would pick several representative neighborhoods and do what are called sample designs. In the case of North Plains, we went ahead and and laid out the entire city. And so this map here shows the service areas that were designed. And probably likely service areas that would be would be deployed if you were to launch service here. And so it's a combination of aerial and underground construction. And so I want to go through a couple of those and show you a little bit more of the detail, and then how the costs kind of roll up into our overall capital budget. So on the next slide, we're looking at on, on the west side of town. As you know, lots of aerial construction in this area. And you'd be using those poles that are already in use by PGE to go ahead and put up your fiber optic facility on those poles. And then where there's aerial drops, you will put in aerial drops, and where there's underground drops, you would put in underground drops. And so this is the north one service area in terms of the what that looks like. About 1.6 miles of overhead plant, about 0.7 miles of underground plants. It's like a 70/30 split. And as we go through this and, and show the table at the end, what you really want to look at is the total cost per passing, and we define a passing as a home or business passed by the network. And so when you go through and you construct this fiber to the home system, you're constructing the fiber network that passes every house. And then as customers sign up for service, then you go in and run a drop from the network into the home after they sign up for service. So in this case, this is a mostly aerial, aerial service area, and the cost, total cost per passing is around $1,600 per home or business passed. So the next one is in the east, and this is a newer underground subdivision. And down by, by the school. And so what we're looking at here is 100% underground, which is a lot more expensive to build out. And all of these, all of this network would go in front lot, so it's all front easement. On mostly one side of the street, but then you still have to cross to the other side of the street to pick up the other houses. When you look at the cost per passing here, it's about $1,000 more per passing. And so, and that's really because of the cost, the cost to put in underground construction is about 10 times the cost to put in aerial construction. So we did this exercise in terms of designing and then costing out from a labor and materials perspective for all of the service areas, for all the passings in the city that we knew of. And so that's what the, that's what the table shows on the next slide. Is how we came up with the overall capital budget for outside plant construction, which is, you know, basically 9% of, of the capital budget. And when you look at all the different service areas, you know, most of them are a mix of overhead and underground. But we do have three areas that are all underground. And, and the total cost per passing ranges from, you know, it's about 1557 in that north area, all the way up to, you know, close to $3,000 for weighted average of 21, about $2,200 per passing. And so we're pretty confident in these numbers, and this is what we used to use as inputs for the financial analysis that Dave's going to talk about next.
Okay. Thanks, Neil. So just briefly, before we delve into the, the detailed metrics regarding the pro forma and the financial analysis, we did look at funding. This is one example slide, the BEED program, Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program, is the major federal level program out there. It's got 42 billion in total funding. And so this one is being talked about quite extensively. There are others, though, at the federal level and the state level. We've looked at all of them. The issue in your case is what you see in the middle of this chart, where you see eligible use of funds. And that is that last mile infrastructure projects must target what the FCC calls un or underserved areas. And the FCC definition of an underserved area is not having access to 100 meg downstream, 20 meg upstream. So unfortunately, it's a pretty low threshold in today's age. Unfortunately, it's a pretty low threshold uh in today's age. Um, you know, where anything at a hundred meg or more is considered fully served. Um, and so you do not meet that criteria within city limits. Um, and that criteria flows through virtually every grant program that we've looked at. So. Really, these these federal dollars are very targeted at at truly rural areas. And so that's not really going to be an option in terms of funding for a project of this nature. So if we go the next slide, that leaves us with a a range of options that, you know, are pretty traditional in nature. Um, and and you've got some options here, and we've had clients use different permutations of this. The most common would be number one and number two. Uh, that would reflect what Hillsborough has done, for example. Which is typically a combination of a long-term bond, usually about twenty years. It's either general obligation or revenue bond. But backed by the city, either the the taxing or the revenue generation capability of the city or its utilities. And then a working capital loan to fund initial operating losses to go in tandem with the bond. Um, if you go with a wholesale model, there is going to be obviously funding coming in from those partnership fees that we talked about before. Um, and then two other options that are less often used but are out there, and we've had clients use them. One would be equity. Uh, Beverly Hills is is a client of ours. They they used equity. Um, and then last one would be uh going back to that example, the Mon Idaho. Would be using a local improvement district type of funding structure as well. So so there's a range of options here. When we get to the pro form analysis, we're really going to be looking at one and two. As kind of the most typical, but we have models where we can look at all of these. Um, so that's certainly an option. Okay, so let's start with own and operate. So we're going to start with that third model where you do everything here, and then we'll kind of just. Iteratively look from there what changes, if you will. So this is the revenue picture. Um, you can see on the chart here, um, this is a fifteen year view going up to about over a million dollars. The bulk of the revenues, as you would expect, come from residential internet. That's the purple in the chart. Um, and then there are some other revenue sources. Um, high capacity services towards larger businesses, wholesale revenue, et cetera. It just depends on the model. Um, but it really is about the revenue that can be achieved from the residential market. The serviceable premises, in your case, we did incorporate. The urban growth opportunity that you're looking at over the next ten years or so. Uh, because it is substantial. So uh currently. Um, well, currently, if we look at twenty twenty-four, which is when the model starts, about fifteen hundred residential premises, sixty-five commercial. But with that growth, urban growth opportunity expansion. That would go up pretty substantially, especially for residential. Adding almost a thousand premises over time. And so we feathered that in as the development happens over time. Um, we're using twenty-five percent take rate on the internet. That's coming from that phase one survey that was done. And then you can see the price points that we talked about also tested in that same survey. Um, and then you see commercial pricing as well. Um, so and there's some install fees, et cetera, but those are the those are the main highlights of what's driving revenue in the pro forma. Okay, next slide. And then if we look at operating expenses. Um, for this model in particular, uh, the main operating expense is staffing. And that's in the red, as you can see. Um, there are expenses as well, like you have to pay for bandwidth if you're going to be an internet provider. Their vendor maintenance fees, et cetera. Um, so we've accounted for all those, but as you can see, it's mostly about staffing. And I'll can you I'll give you a picture of what that headcount looks like. Uh, but we believe it would be seven full-time equivalent. That for this particular model, it goes down in the other models, of course. Um, and that's running pretty lean. We've got a three percent annual wage increase. And then we're using your fifty-one percent benefits loading as well. Um, and then we've got other operating expenses like vehicles, professional services, right away fees, et cetera. Um, so that's the picture on operating expenses. And then in terms of the staffing level, this is what that looks like, and I'll show you how this varies as you go into the different models, but the green positions. Would be funded. Full-time positions that would be incremental to the current city organization. Um, so to be assistant general manager. You'd have install technicians, service techs, network admin. Um, that'd be kind of the IT person dedicated to broadband. Technical service reps, help desk. And then on the right CSR is customer service representatives to answer questions about billing, sign people up, et cetera. Um, so pretty straightforward there in terms of structuring this if you're doing this all yourself. In terms of the capex, um, so we've covered revenue operating expense. Now let's talk about capital expense. Um, there's capital expense over time, but the bulk of it occurs with the initial network construction. So if we look at the first five years. You're looking at about a seven million dollar total capital investment. And the vast majority of that is the outside plant network construction. Um, and that typically involves all that labor, which can be expensive that Neil was just talking about. To put fiber in place to pass every premises in the city. And then there are other capital costs, of course. Um, and you can see kind of different categories. Uh, that come into play, everything from vehicles. FTP O N Ts are fiber to the premise, optical network terminals. They're basically fiber modems that would go in the home or the business. Um, and so we've got all of this accounted for in terms of the capital that would be required. Okay, so let's now shift to the operating partner view. Um, and let's just talk about who's doing what here, because as I mentioned at the outset, some of the work gets offloaded. To a partner, okay? Essentially, it's like outsourcing. And the idea here would be that. This would likely be for the first five years, maybe extended for an additional period. But the 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 concept here is to offload some of the early staffing requirements. Onto a service provider that already has the staffing and expertise in place. So you don't have to do everything from day one. You could build your cash flow. And kind of ease into running this kind of business. And this is a model that can work very well in accomplishing that. Um, you still fully own it, you still fund it. Um, you're gonna you're gonna be the service provider, but you're going to outsource a few carriers, and those are in the middle of this chart. So those three areas would be customer operations. So customer care, answering the phone, taking service orders. Network operations. Uh, outside plant maintenance outage response, um, kind of the heavy duty stuff if something goes wrong in the network on the outside plant. And then the last piece would be. In the industry, we call it the inside plant, but it'd be data network administration. So it would be the switches and routers and all the configuration work. Uh, that typically, you know, your IT personnel would handle. Um, and this could be something that your partner does as well. So by doing all these three areas, that does substantially offload some of the staffing requirement that you deal with. So if we look at what that structure looks like on the next slide. This is what happens. So you go from seven um down to about four. Um, because the items in purple are now being handled by your network partner. Um, so you can imagine that has a substantial impact on your operating expense and reduces it. So. It can be very financially efficient, especially at the outset. Okay? Now let's talk about wholesale. So. We're going to talk about, I I use two examples, and we're going to kind of stick with those in terms of their structure. Um, and so we'll talk about Ting again. Um, they have examples, and this is going to vary. It's it's all these deals are custom. If you really look under the hood. At some of these wholesale deals that are out there. Um, but you know. What they've done before is a six dollar passing fee and a seventeen dollar per connection fee. So we'll start with that as a starting point. And then in a man, they do that sixteen dollar and fifty cent connection fee that I mentioned um earlier. And as we run the scenarios, we're going to look at those, and then we're going to go a little bit further and look at. What if those fees were a little bit different? What would that look like for you in terms of attaining financial feasibility? So we'll talk about that as well. One thing I'll mention right up front is we're going to get, as we get into some of the custom scenarios that we ran when we did the pro form analysis. We're going to redact some of those in this public forum. For the simple reason that if you do decide down the road at some point to proceed with this project. And you do begin partner negotiations. We wouldn't want your financial analysis to be out there in the public record for. Uh, those partners, potential partners to see during that negotiation process. So we have the numbers, we know what they are. Uh, but we believed it would be not be in your best interest to make those public. Per a potential contract negotiation scenario. Okay, next slide. So this is what happens in the org chart. With wholesale goes down to one infrastructure manager. Uh, all the purple is handled by that service provider. Uh, and keep in mind, they're just doing what they do today, every day. They're just expanding into your market and adding your territory into uh what they service. So. Uh, pretty straightforward in terms of how it gets staffed. Okay? Now, the there are courses uh impacts across all the financial metrics. Um, there is less revenue. Um, because in this case, it it depends, but in in wholesale. They're going to bill uh the customer and then they will pay you a fee. So it depends on. The different model and what terms are negotiated, of course, but you can see here, if we just kind of run the baseline scenarios. Of Ting in red. And Aman in green and compare that to you doing everything in orange. You can see that uh the revenue comes in at, you know, roughly half of what it otherwise would be. Um, so that drops down, of course. Next slide. And I won't go through the 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 impact on OpEx and the the CapEx, but those are substantially reduced as well. Um, but we'll kind of see the summary result on that. So. Okay, so now we're kind of moving into the the final piece of this, which is. An evaluation of the financial feasibility across these models. And I just, before I do that, I want to touch base on some of the terms. And think and the metrics that we use to evaluate feasibility. So these are the four things that we try to do and look at. Um, I think that number two and number three are the most important, but let's briefly touch on all four. So the first is the timeframe to positive operating income. This this is what gets you out of that working capital loan. You want to go cash flow positive, and that way you're self-sufficient in terms of the cash flow of the operation. Typical goal within four years. Net payback period. This really is a look at the total investment of the project versus when you get that all back and how long that takes. So. Uh, and projects like this are very long timeframes. Um, obviously, it's very CapEx intensive. And so, you know, our goal and and you know, there's nothing, it's it's very subjective, but. We believe ideally you're looking at a period of twenty years or less for a full project net payback period. Third one is no secondary financing, probably the most important one. And the concept here is that. If you've got a good plan and it's executing well, you would take on your initial investment funding, whether that be a long-term. Uh, bond plus working cap loan or whatever it would be, maybe even adding an equity, whatever that looks like. But that once you secure that funding and put it in place, you don't need to go back and get more funding after you're up and running. Um, and so we'll look at that piece as well. And then the fourth one is just. Sensitivity analysis, and that's really not, uh, you know, a a metric or a threshold. It's really about us. Re-running the pro forma to see what would work, and we'll talk a little bit about that. Okay? So let's start with, again, this is this is the retail model. And then we'll talk about other models, but kind of like we just started, let's start with this one. So you're doing everything here. And this is cash flow after debt service. So that's that white line there. Um, you can see the capital expenditure is pretty intensive in year one, two, as you build out the network. Uh, we've got debt service in here, both for interest and principal. Those are the red and the green. Um, and the important thing here is that cash flow with debt service never goes positive. So you can see it kind of cruising along at that negative one point five million range or so. And so if we go to the next slide. Because you're never generating cash flow from the system. What eventually happens is you you use up your initial financing, which would be that orange long-term bond plus the red working capital loan. And you don't have enough money being generated to fund the ongoing operation. At after year five, and so you have to go to secondary financing subsequent to the initial financing. Um, we're modeling that in purple as a line of credit. Uh, you could call it something else, but the bottom line here is the debt just keeps building because of the lack of positive cash flow. So that's not a good situation. Okay, so that model is going to have struggles. Now, we also looked at. The retail model where you have an operating partner. So the one we just looked at is the orange line. And then we looked at with an operating partner in the green. And it's better, but it's still not sufficient. It still does not achieve positive cash flow during the life of the project. And so again. You're kind of digging this hole from a debt standpoint. Okay, so the retail model in your case is not looking good. Um. So let's proceed to. Uh, well, and I'll I'll, before we do, we're going to go to wholesale, but I mentioned sensitivity that we did here. This is just a different way of looking at it, looking at summary metrics. So you can see on the left, the retail own and operate, then there's the operating partner. And you can see the construction cost per passing that Neil came up with. Uh, the financing amounts, total funding requirements. And that project break even in both cases being over twenty years. Now, we did look at a couple of things, a couple of what ifs. So under the operating partner. We looked at if we if the take rate was higher, what would that take? It would have to go up to about fifty-five percent. And it would require about one point five million in equity contribution to reduce your debt service load. That gets you there. However, that's a really big jump in the take rate. Um, so there's obviously significant risk with that kind of scenario. Then we also looked at what if um there were a significant reduction in construction costs, and we cut it in half. Uh, down to about eleven hundred dollars. Um, that doesn't get you there. Um, so. So between the kind of the baseline view, if you will, on the retail models as well as the sensitivity. We're not seeing a good formula here to go forward under a retail model. Okay? So now let's look at wholesale. Um, I'm just going to kind of jump to the conclusion here. Um, we've got a lot more detail in the full report if you want to reference that. Um, so if we look at the, what I'll call the baseline wholesale models of Ting at six and seventeen in the orange. And then Aman in the purple. At sixteen dollars and fifty cents. Um, those are both still weak. But we did identify uh the wholesale terms that would be required. And those are in the green and the white that would get you there. Now, whether or not you can get there in a negotiation in a real world environment, uh, not sure. Um, but we do know what those numbers are, and there are terms that would be financially viable. Um, and there are even situations here, as I I think I mentioned, where. Some partners will bring substantial investments to the table. It it just depends. So. So this potentially is an avenue. I think one thing we can certainly conclude is that if you did proceed down the road. That your focus should be on a wholesale model with a partner sharing some of the burden. Um, because just from a financial results standpoint, that's going to be much more attractive. Okay? So if we look at summary here, um, just again, I won't go through all the details, but you can see we've got baseline on the left. And then we did a couple of sensitivity views with each of the different wholesale examples that we talked about uh and seeing what's possible there. Okay? All right, I think this is the last slide. So, um. So basically, I I think pretty straightforward. It's there's a significant investment in terms of the construction cost of about twenty-two hundred. Um, we know that the take rate i- is a little subdued from the survey results, so we're using twenty-five percent based on that. Um, as we look at the pro form analysis, retail. Whether you do it or even bringing an operating partner, it's really not going to achieve financial feasibility. Really wholesale model is the way to look at it. Um, I think the Aman model in your case could be potentially interesting. Um, in terms of a going slow over time and really reducing the fundamental. Um, in terms of a going slow over time and really reducing the fundamental requirement. Uh, that was needed. As I mentioned, in their case, it was a million dollars invested and they have no debt. Um, and then as we talked about, we do have numbers and. Uh, the metrics around the wholesale model, but we've, we've just taken those out to protect those for the time being. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, counsel, do you have any questions for Dave?
Right now, my Comcast is at five G. And um, I asked her what would a quick breakdown of what's the E part, right, the M part? If you have that, it's why you can do it and we're not like that. Cause uh, okay, about two or three bucks a month. For that with the combination, uh, what? Good with this really needing. Um. For us to provide me here and. I know that some of the areas that know that outside of earth planes. That they're adjacent, they really isn't that, they're not similar. They're already using now. But for the city itself, I think. There's already. Cable provided and I think it's kind of reasonable to what, what you know, we have there. Is there a saving default or? Any action, how we can deal with, with the net game of citizens?
And Andy, was that directed to me? I, I. Uh, that I could not hear that very well.
Um, yeah.
Well, we briefly, we'll speak a little louder. Um. I quickly asked my wife, she owns the bills for the internet. Um, what speed are we getting through Comcast? She said five G. Or great, how much does that cost? Like, yeah, I'm two fifty. But that's what we said as well. My dad is pretty old and watches TV and you know. But we, they raised, uh, maybe as all combined. I was wondering, that's five G, I was looking at your uh, model for four G. And that was around a hundred and fifty dollars, he said. Um, what benefit? Would the city have to? What benefit for the capital like they? Ex- exposure for this? And amount of twenty year break even? Will the city provide to the residents? I noticed that I purposefully by saying that with some of the areas outside of. Are struggling with it enough? They have to use uh. Use net or some other. Oh, or something else for it. But for this people side of earthquakes. What kind of benefit are they gonna give? Just cost? I don't see a higher than this speed.
Yeah, the question is, what's, what's the benefit?
Correct, is it a cost savings and the higher speed, is it more houses being reached? What is the benefit?
Well, the, the, the end user benefit, so Comcast does offer a gig now. Within the city, as you're aware. The, the main benefit is going to be price. So we ran the financial analysis at an end user monthly price of seventy dollars per month. Comcast is up and they, they use promotional pricing, so. You have to caveat this with, it depends, but generally speaking, their, their rate card price per gig is about a hundred and ten dollars a month. So you're looking at a fairly significant monthly savings there. If you compare. What we call in the industry rate card to rate card. Um. So that would be the main benefit. I think the other thing that we typically see, and we, we've had clients deploy these systems like Hillsborough. Is I, I do believe there's a pretty consistent pattern of improved customer service. When a municipal like yourself provides a service like this to the community compared to. The kind of customer service levels that the incumbents typically provide. Um, and again, that can vary by market and it can vary by the, the type of incumbent and who they are. Um, but those are, I would say are the two primary. Uh, benefits and you know, paradigm shifts, you know, if you were to provide a service like this.
You're saying cost and service. What about NSB? I'm at five G right now in my house. And that seems sufficient.
Was the question, what about speed?
Yeah, what about the up, the upscale ability? I don't know much about. You ever shut up with the internet? Uh, how difficult is, is it at one gig though, if we're modeling? But however, we're becoming more and more data heavy. And our ship is able to have more speed and more thing. Um. And we have scale to this gig? Or any detriment, so.
Yeah, the system that, if you were to deploy a fiber to the front system now, like other municipal broadband operators are. You're. You're gonna be deploying a ten gig, gigabit system. And so that's gonna be ten gigabit symmetrical, both directions. And so you're going to be able to offer one gig symmetric. And you're going to be able to offer multiple gig services. Out of the gate. Um, and that would be a premium, uh, be a premium service that you'd be offering. But in terms of the runway. And your ability to grow and to go way beyond gig service and way beyond multi gig service. That's the platform that you're putting in because that. That fiber optic network that you're putting in, um. It's designed to have one, one fiber strand if needed dedicated to each, to each household. And that one fiber strand, um. Even now has the ability to offer multiple, multi gig services. And then over time, the way the, the way the standards are going. You're going to have multiple wavelengths. And each one of those wavelengths is ten gigabits. Uh, by itself. And you're gonna have multiple ten gigabit services. So. I mean, maybe in five or ten years, we don't, you know, you don't know. Ten years ago. People would say, well, I'm happy with. One point five megabits or I'm happy with cable modem run, you know. And now everyone's getting gig service. Well, in ten years. You may have multi gig services or you may have ten gig services to every home. Or that's, that's what may be the, the standard offering. So yes. Fiber to the home is the ultimate and runway and upgrade path. As well as upstream capabilities. And that's what the system would offer you. And you know, the folks like Comcast. It's, they, they can offer gig service, but they cannot offer reliable and ubiquitous. Uh. Gig uh, symmetric. And they're always going to be struggling to wring as much capacity out of that last piece of coax. Compared to a whole fiber system.
Thank you. So we're putting in the, uh, when that should probably last for next twenty years. With this, and it's, and it can go a lot beyond thinking. That's, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, the, the, the outside plant, the stuff that's the most expensive stuff to put in. Under, in the ground and in the air, that's gonna last twenty, thirty years. And uh. If you, if something does come along. In between then, then and now, you're just gonna be u- upgrading or replacing the equipment on each end. Which is much less expensive and you can target that upgrade uh, much better than having to dig up the streets again.
Yeah, and if you, if you reference our full report, you'll see that we have funded electronics upgrades in the pro forma in year ten. To do what Neil is talking about right now.
Okay, very good, counsel. Is there any questions? Any additional questions for the team?
Counselor Sheldon, one thing I will note, and I guess for Neil and Dave is, um, online is Christian Salgado, uh, with the county, and I think he's their. Broadband investment coordinator. So we, uh, we met with him, uh, a few weeks back. He was out of North Plains, kind of learning more about. Uh, the, the community and, um, as you may know, the federal government's pouring a lot of broadband money. Into states across the country. And I think part of Christian's role is to look for opportunities in Washington County and partnering with communities. So that's another piece in this. Did I characterize that right, Christian?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Andy, and thank you for inviting me and thanks for the presentation. You know, I, I think that, um. The conversation, uh, between fiber and coaxial, I'm, I'm hearing it talk about. You know, at all levels as future proofing your infrastructure, right? Because. Fiber is kind of like the, as mentioned, the end goal. So. Uh, just really enjoyed the presentation, really informative. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Last call for questions? Yeah, I presume we'll get a copy of this.
Yes, we, I was just about to lean over to Bill. We'll all, I'll send that out to all the council tomorrow. So you can have some reading for the rest of the week, the, the full report.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah. Okay, folks, uh, we're to revert back to our consent agenda tonight. And uh, because we have. A, uh, we have a couple of dissenting votes. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and take it and pull it from six. And we're gonna go ahead and succeed. We're gonna go ahead and. Uh, discuss, uh, resolution number two, two, four, nine, which is the. Petition NP two, three, dash zero, two. Uh, that will appear on the May twenty twenty-four ballot. And there is a staff report, uh, in there and, uh, I'm. At this time, uh, Andy, is there anything you need to or want to discuss? About that topic before we enter into discussion?
Uh, counsel, President Sheldon, no. Just for the record, I think pulling it off of the consent agenda. And then doing a voice vote would be better. And then we can go back and do six A and B as part of the consent agenda, which. Are usually done by consent.
Yes. Okay, so, uh. I guess since we're at C. We're gonna have to do this in two pieces, so we can do either one first. So I'm gonna entertain a motion for six A and C only.
B, A and B.
Or excuse me, A and B only.
Right, so that.
And.
Agenda in the minutes, yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, that includes the two topics that are in that consent. So we'd be consenting to six A and B only.
There's your motion.
So I, yeah, I need, I entertain a motion to approve six A and B only.
I will to approve the consent agenda for item six A and B only.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve consent agenda, item six A and B. Of the North Plain City Council November sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none opposed, the motion is carried. All right, now we're gonna consider under separate. Uh, item. Six C, six C is back to what I mentioned before, resolution number two, four, nine. Which is a petition that was, uh, referred, uh, referred to NP two, three, dash zero, two. To appear on the May twenty twenty-four ballot. And, uh, is there anything you wanna mention about this other than what's already in the package?
Nope, nothing.
All right, so that being said, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and. Uh, if you wanna have discussion, we can do that now, otherwise I'm gonna call and entertain a motion. Okay, I'll call for a motion on resolution number two, two, four, nine.
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion through, uh.
Okay, motion to approve by Counselor Kendall for resolution number two, two, four, nine. Do I have a second?
I think I agree when I have a discussion.
Well, we can have a discussion once we have a second.
Yes. I will second.
Okay, the motion, motion, resolution number two, two, four, nine, it's been moved and seconded. Now. Is there any discussion?
I guess my discussion. Uh. You follow the process. I know they didn't get the. The votes in and, uh. I still just moved for how they run about it. We had enough meetings. And. And we did have. Four ninety come into play. It was all outsiders. And that's who was passing there. He put a, uh. Wait for them to collect money. Uh, to raise money for their, their organization. And I just approve it. So that's all I gotta say. I think it's, uh, it's mostly harassment. I'm gonna go with harassment.
Okay, any additional discussion?
Uh, I, well, I, I think we should approve this because people ask what, um, and that's how it works. However, uh, this is the smartest way of doing it, is getting holistic. Of how we're gonna build a city, uses of all the development we have. Better than us to build a seatable and peaceful, a hundred thousand dollars. And have it broken apart, development rotated out of it. And that having the holistic view and having them. Most economically and with the most. Eyes that you do, pretty planning on. Having it go to boot. People are. Are gonna, uh, have a just a one on a bed. It really. Could be a very expensive. Proposition to go about this slowly. And have it done piecemeal by, piecemeal by piecemeal, this in nine years. I likely have it as we vote here. And one.
The ordinance.
One sponsor would pad up appropriately and cheaper. But. I, uh, do think we should approve it. That's where we're gonna do it.
Okay, thank you. There any? Any other discussion? My only question was already answered. This is statutory requirement. For our city charter, so. Uh. Have, having no additional, uh, discussion. I'll ask, uh. For a motion to approve. Well, let's see, we've had a motion and a second. So I'll ask for a vote, uh. On resolution number two, two, four, nine.
Counselor Sheldon, I just wanted to chime in really quick. Um, I just wanted to double check, did, did we lose Mayor Linehan as a voting member?
Yes, we did. She, she had, yeah, she had a headache. So she left the meeting. And so I'm running the meeting now. And so, uh, absolutely, uh, I didn't see your hand, so my apologies for that, but. Uh, we are taking up this, as you probably are aware, we've broken it out. Separate from the consent agenda. We approved, approved A and B and now we're at C. So. Uh, is there any further discussion from you?
Nope, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you so much.
All right, you're welcome.
Yeah, yeah, uh, thank you. Yeah, you know, by just sending vote way back when, when I go to that here, I have not been contacted by anybody that has gone forward with this. Getting these signatures. I would just clarify that I have not been contacted with anybody. Don't come to my door and I, I'm. Think I, what I'm amazed at is that they got the votes. I mean, I didn't know that was that many.
Well, they don't have the vote.
They'll have, yeah, I mean.
They have enough signatures presented to the ballot. That's all they have.
Yeah.
At this point. And yeah, uh, I can, I will add some additional discussion.
Uh huh.
There's, there's a fair amount of consternation around the fact that we have an outside interest coming into our community, which is our living room.
Right.
And basically trying to control policy. So. Uh, that's all I'm gonna say about it. We're approving this only because we have to approve this and we are going through the process. And, uh, with that, I'm going to, uh, ask for all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, we need to have a roll call vote. Counselor Smith.
Nay.
Counselor Fage.
I just wanted to break that with Jesse, I was big fan or, or I think, but. So we had a relative consent agenda, but I am, yes.
Counselor Kendall.
Yes.
Counselor Paven.
Yay.
And I'm a yay. Counselor Sheldon.
Yep, counsel. And if I may, there was some, uh, there was a question in the chat about being confused about what happened earlier. That's my bad. We should have just pulled it off at that time. This makes it cleaner. It's. For the record and an official. And the other items are, you know, so that's all. Wasn't to rehash.
Yeah, understood. Okay, with that, uh, it looks like we're going to. What jump button?
Ordnance discussion. Economic.
Yeah, so. Actual item that's up next is B, which is new business, which is the discussion. Of the ordinance language, F language for the development, economic development commission from a committee. So, uh, with that, uh, I think Mr. Reed probably wants to. Enlighten us a bit other than over and what you provided in your actual report.
Very good. Uh, thank you, Counsel Sheldon. Uh, thank you, uh, counsel. Um. Last month, you had a great work session with, um, with the. Um with the Economic Development Committee. And um it was their desire to chat with you about various changes, updates, and even expansion. Um by two members from five to that they currently have to seven members. Um and um within all of this, they sought to add the Economic Development Committee. Uh a larger committee, um in ordinance, like make it a a. A you know, permanent, permanent standing, you know, it's currently just a stick kind of standing technically ad hoc committee. But this is gonna uh put them with ordinance, make it a permanent committee, um and a larger one at that, up to seven members. The draft ordinance that's in the um the agenda tonight. Um that, all that language basically is a result of that. Conversation that the EDC had with you and ideas that they presented to you and feedback and discussion that you had with them. Um and then at their um meeting last week, we went through and put this into new ordinance. Uh in language that's um ordinance that's consistent with language for other bodies that we have in ordinance. So right down to the numbering. Um so we just wanna put it out there that um. This draft ordinance, a version of it, it it may get a little bit of refinement, probably not a ton, but we we plan to come before you. Um and it's ordinance, so it would be a hearing. Um but to adopt ordinance to enshrine the Economic Development Commission. So uh before the end of the year so that they can recruit two additional members um and be a full body uh January first. So um you've had time to review the ordinance and um if you've been able to, I just kinda wanna put that out there for you.
I didn't see anything about um how many expenses they could have. Some of the other um. Uh I think there's some of the other areas we had, some people moved away and. They were working from home and they got resigned to someplace that was in France or someplace in Europe. And there was there, but you can't get a hold of those, so it's kinda hard to get there when you resign. I didn't see anything about that, maybe. Even if they could miss without without having given the uh given the board a chance to vote, you know, or not.
Counselor Page, that's a great observation and question. Um we talked about that. There's actually a provision in this draft ordinance that. Actually, it's also true of the other bodies and ordinance. Um each board is charged with establishing its own rules. A rule document. And in the rule document that then that the new EDC uh by ordinance would be required to do. That rule document would address your questions. At what point? Uh what how how many absences are they allowed um before they have to resign? Um what are the conditions under which if they move or you know, like you you stated? Um what does the rule document dictate in terms of them having to resign or? The mayor would be the appropriate person to take a new um nomination and and have you all recommend approval, that sort of thing. So that's a rule document required in in the ordinance itself. Uh the uh well, the the ordinance that requires the docu- a rule document to be written. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, uh we can open it up for discussion. I I've been through it at least a couple of times. Uh everything looks pretty good to me. Uh there isn't too much that I really questioned there. I I do wanna go back over it again, but. It looks like it's uh, you know, it's actually a little bit better than we've done in the past in terms of defining. The roles and the duties and some of those things, so uh you know, I'm. I certainly support this and I I think it's it's time. And the only reason why I say that's because I remember when it was Counselor Imers and myself and the mayor. And and basically uh Stuart King that that thought about this. And it wasn't our thought necessarily. It's 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 prompting, you know, because. We get the direction that, you know, we have to be thinking about these things. We're becoming a little more sophisticated. So uh.
That's like change.
Open for discussion. Clicking for Bill, actually.
I have, I have.
Uh if if I might counsel, there is one kind of. Andy just pointed out and reminded me, there is one key point in here that's a little bit different about the EDC. In the ordinance, in this draft ordinance, and that is that they would really like one city council member to be appointed for a full year. As their ex officio.
The same one?
The same one.
I I am in against that. I wouldn't see it right, so each city council member has a chance to know what they're talking about and be in touch. Uh we had somebody when I first saw the council member. They uh wanted to only do parts and I was, I disagree. I think the city council should have. Knowledge of, oh, I think I think a good rotation should be should be great. And I was important, I would oppose one person being among that only.
If if I may, I. I expected that, because I know you you all like to get a broad kind of uh.
Yeah.
View the different boards and committees. I do think that part of this is they've had several. Uh absences throughout the year and sometimes they feel like maybe they're not able to connect with the city council as much. So their thought, and they're the ones that requested this uh was, well, if there's someone that's assigned, we'll see them every month and they'll be able to follow us consistently. I just think if if um we can make sure that they have a city council connection. Every month and they're committed, and I know most of you are, and things happen and stuff like that, and it's, they probably just had a series of unfortunate, you know. Three months in a row or something where where incidents happened, where maybe they felt like they were losing that and that's probably what prompted this and. And again, they're not uh. They they're not coming at this with ill intentions or anything. I think they just wanna have that consistency and then in that way that, I mean, they're. They're an active group and they wanted to show the council too that that action is being taken as well. And I think that's all that all that relates to.
Okay, it wouldn't be bad to get a record of what our record is. Honestly, I don't know if we, we probably don't take roll call those, but I wouldn't mind knowing what that is. It. It doesn't have to point fingers at any particular counselor. It's more about, okay, did we miss nine of them or did we miss three or? Um you know, because they they do need to know that we support their efforts. They make recommendations to us that are important, like our other commissions, so. I can understand the idea of consistency and continuity. It makes perfect sense to me and I understand. Uh James wanting to make sure that there's participation by all of the counselors. But if they're not getting it, you know, how do we know what is that number? Um it'd be good to know that at some point here in the future.
Uh there's, well, the other ones, ha- have been. Is there a, is it this particular one? Uh missing versus the other ones, like we need a little more data, but. I don't wanna lock lock somebody in there and have them have that career. I think it's, I think it's wrong, we need to run for them. I think it's. I understand they want, they want representation, but we have to fix what we have versus. Do this uh do this step. If I could listen to data, like, how many people missed the library board versus medication? Um and maybe revisit our 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 robustness about getting backup or something. That's probably the way to go.
I can go back and collect the data, but you can always see it in the minutes online.
I don't wanna research that, but.
Of course you don't.
Did are all of the minutes, how many I've? I think I went to Civic Web. There's quite a bit there. I'm assuming all the preceding.
Yeah, the minutes are all there. Our website, yeah, it our web, on the website.
Is there a link there for it? Because I think I would.
Go straight to agenda and agendas and minutes.
Right, but I'm thinking for twelve months ago.
They're all there.
Okay.
You betcha.
Well, I thought Civic Web was pretty loaded with documents, so.
Oh, they are, but it's a little more. You have to dig through a little bit more.
Okay.
So I will. I'll put a spreadsheet.
We don't wanna cause any additional effort, but.
No, it's.
If there's a place where we can look at that, I think, you know, maybe we need to be talking amongst ourselves that we. That we avoid those absences by having somebody as Counselor Page suggest, you know. Steps in. Sometimes there's last minute things that are gonna happen. Occasionally, there's just no way to avoid that.
I I think we can workshop that. Uh it's not too hard to make it a bit more general to to um. Uh to revisit that annual basis portion. It could just be the more general um typical ex officio that we're used to and then. And then, you know, just have a conversation with the the EDC at the beginning of the year to see how it would, you know, how the council can best um. Communicate uh with them and, you know, maybe we tend to lend quarterly. Work sessions or something like that to make sure that they're getting, you know, the the direction they want.
Okay, I'm gonna ask uh, you know, for big one, if I don't see a hand, but I just wanted to make sure that we're not excluding you because I've overlooked it before. All right, thank you. Okay, unless there's anything additional. In the chat?
No, it's uh previous topic.
Oh, yeah. Okay. All right, so uh that's gonna take us into unfinished business and we have none tonight. So we will look to the city manager to add any additions to his. Report that he sent to the council and uh in ten A. And uh so I'll let him go with that.
Okay, and just Bill, yeah, we need, we'll come forward November twentieth with the with that ordinance for first reading. Okay. Very good. Couple of weeks from now. Um nothing uh really to add much to the the previous reports. Except that um December eighteenth, um it looks like that'll be a full day, both morning and evening. If that's the date for uh staff breakfast, that's a Monday, December eighteenth. I think that's what one out in the poll. And that evening, in lieu of the council meeting, there'd be a mixer with the other boards and commissions, so pack your calories that day. Okay, all right, so we'll uh we will have the December fourth uh meeting though, the regular meeting um earlier that month. Uh Lori, uh Counselor Sheldon, you hold up this for a second, your portfolio thing there.
Oh, yeah.
Laurie's ordered some of these for all of the counselors. We'll start using them at the beginning of the year, so. Take notes and all of that and then um that'll be a way for uh her to keep track of all your your note taking and everything.
You guys are aware, but um all of the notes that you take, any notes you take during meetings are public record and you need to turn them in to me, so. This way we have a pad in the portfolio. When your pad's full, you just give it to me and we get you a new one.
I have a book that we can grow that stuff that is big, a lot of notes, but this is. I went more just looking online, you know, I think you do that one.
But I mean, I'm technically, yeah. That's good.
Yeah, uh mayor's been good about that, so is Counselor Sheldon, but this way that'll make it just easier on you and plus it'll be, it'll be branded. More plans too, so you can take it to to meetings, all sorts of things. Um then lastly, um our new IT vendor. Um has, there's, they they're very good at cybersecurity. All the staff is doing a lot of uh micro trainings and. Uh and all those things, being aware of things, but they do send out um test spear phishing and um even ransomware emails and things like that. They've caught a couple of people and I'm not gonna name names, but that's okay, that's okay. They've done, gotten cap staff and counselors, but. It's good that these are just testing, so just a reminder, you know, don't open links on any emails if you don't recognize who they're from and. This is all good training for all of us, but um there are little three minute trainings that we all take, you know, one, once or twice a week. And they're just good reminders and auditors like that or insurance company likes that because every counselor has a northplains. Uh dot org email address too, so um just, you know, if you got any questions or you wanna see any of these little trainings. Um just let me know again, but I've I've I sent out an email not long ago, but thankfully, you know. They've said the only time anyone's been caught is one the the, I guess, the phishing campaign that they did. Um was uh snared someone and it's much better than. An actual uh phishing campaign that got an employee or anyone else, so just a reminder. Yeah, okay, there you go. That's the natural thing, yep.
Okay, I have a question. Nobody else does. And and it comes down to that um. I don't know, I'm not understanding exactly what we have. I know we have Outlook, okay, but. I get a sense that we have access to the entire three sixty five.
The council does not.
Okay.
No, we we wanted to keep uh.
That's.
We wanted to keep the risk low for for council members. Yeah, it's basically email accounts.
All right.
Yeah.
All staff has everything else, but yeah.
If I'm intel, I have a lot of access to a whole lot of stuff and there's fishing, they will be able to, they will get into fishing things for that.
Mm hmm.
But here's just email address. There's nothing really corrupt.
Yeah, but you know, phishing campaign is the, it'll s- send you something that's superficially acting about someone else and that leads you to make an action to.
Oh, no.
Right, 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 so. Yeah.
Yeah, I I know that my score isn't real high. I don't think I've even paid attention to one of them, but I go through a pretty rigorous um. Security protocol in my professional world and other businesses, so. Uh you know, I'm pretty accustomed to some of those things, but that doesn't mean you can't be taken, but. Uh yeah, I'll do some of those. That'll probably improve my score.
Yeah, it as long as you're not opening links, you shouldn't be. That's the number one thing, yep, so.
All right, uh anything else for that uh report? Nope, hearing none. Then we're gonna look at the business calendar for council or uh. Anything that we have flagged on there. Let me jump to that. Everything look all right there for folks that are assigned. And again, if anybody needs to make a swap, I would just probably text out a. Communication, maybe individually uh to each counselor or reach out to your favorite counselor or whatever it might be. To see if they're available to entertain um just even if it's not a swap, if you take the spot because you can't make. And then city councilor meeting calendar schedule. I think everything's pretty well set there. Anything of note and or council reports?
I'm gonna have a technical humanity uh by if maybe on the eighth or sixteenth of the Wednesday. I just do, do we have any in our place to uh work on, do we know what, maybe to me a note now, I wanna be great.
Uh I got a meeting with Virginia at the end of the month here, a couple of weeks. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
And uh I wanna thank Chief Hatchman for coming out to the scout meeting and talking about police stuff. The kids were very excited to know whether he shot somebody or not, so that's what has us. Anyways, he was a, he was a present person to work with, was very nice. Um I highly recommend him.
Okay. Anybody have any additional reports? All right, I think uh with that, uh we've exhausted all of the items on our agenda for tonight. And we are now adjourned at eight thirty, one P M.
Good night.